Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you for coming to the Williamson County School Board meeting tonight. Our first item on the agenda is to record attendance. The board members, if you will, record attendance.
There are nine members present.
Thank you. Next item of our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll follow that with a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move be seated. Our first item of the agenda is items of particular public interest, and this is our time of the evening where we do have members of the public come to speak with us. Tonight, we have seven individuals, and we'll allow three minutes of speaking time per individual. And as you come up to the screen or to the podium, you'll see that timer on the screen for you to help guide you through your topics. The first individual is William Petty.
Call me Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I want to start off, first of all, with giving, thanking you. I watched the entire work session. And as I say, what you guys have to go through every month, I think, oh, man, it's almost mind-numbing sometimes. But I do appreciate some of the decisions that you made, particularly with regards to the public comment, law discussion, and maybe possibly changing it. You haven't done that, really, not fundamentally. And the second thing I really appreciate is your decision to take the 5G tower contract off the agenda. I think that's a very important issue. I think that's something we need to study. I think scientifically, there's enough information to say that these towers, so close to the children, could very well be harmful. And out of the abundance of caution, I think we should be very reluctant to put those towers close to the school. So I appreciate what you've done there. And then, of course, the busking situation is always fascinating to watch. I know that's a conundrum, and I know you're trying to deal with that. That being said, I'm speaking again tonight about the flag. As far as I know, it's still flying in the Bethesda Elementary School. We have been talking about this for the last few months, and I think we need to have a policy. Because if we're going to allow that flag to fly in the classroom, what flags are we not going to allow? What if somebody wants to put a Hamas flag in there? Would that be okay? How about a swastika? Would that be okay? Or how about a Confederate battle flag? Would that be okay? I mean, what are the limits? What are we going to allow and what are we not going to allow? Why don't we have a policy that's very simple? You have the American flag, and you have the Tennessee flag. That's a neutral classroom. It doesn't promote anything or it doesn't de-promote anything. It doesn't push any agenda. It has a classroom where the kids come, and the primary purpose of the school is to teach kids how to read, write, and do arithmetic, right? Am I correct? So why do we allow these kinds of personal? And I would say, I would go as far as to say it's indoctrination. We're seeing it all around the country. We're seeing kindergarteners, and I'm not saying this happened here, but we see kindergarteners in other school districts around the country who are being asked to decide what sex they are or what gender they are. Well, the truth of the matter is, there are two sexes. There are not multiple sexes. A child is not assigned their sex at birth. You don't get assigned sex. Your sex is created in the womb during gestation. So, you know, that's what that flag represents. Is that what we want in our classrooms? Is that what we want to teach our children? So I ask you, I think it's very important. I think we need to develop a policy that's very clear and is very fair to all. Because if you have a flag in there, an LGBT-plus flag, and you have a young Christian child coming in there, how do they feel? And secondly, lastly, last thing, if we can't trust our teachers to be fair to all students without a flag in a room, we have another additional problem. So thank you very much. I appreciate it again. I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Petty. Our next speaker is Erica Bowden.
Hi, my name's Eric Bowden. I'm here again, and I apologize that we're all wasting your time as board members trying to talk about things that aren't really your job. This man is not a doctor, and he's lecturing us about sex and identity. I just don't think that's in the scope of what he's an expert in. So my apologies. He asked, why would we have this flag? And I'll tell you, it's because the kids who that flag means something to are being bullied in school because of people like this who have values that are different. And that flag can mean a lot to a kid who is otherwise feeling alone. But really, what I want to say is that you cannot stand for liberty while at the same time putting forth arguments to take away someone else's liberty. If someone is proud of who they are, and they want to fly a flag or have a sign, that's their prerogative. A reminder, again, about the definition of liberty, the state of being free without oppressive restrictions. We start banning flags in books, and where does that end? Well, history tells us where it ends, in the books that they want to ban. Some clarification about the Moms for Liberty groups and other similar groups. When they come here and they talk about how you, that your job is to protect kids, they mean their kids and only their kids. They don't mean all kids. They don't mean other people's kids. They certainly don't mean my kids. And how is it protection to create a school environment full of intolerance and then take away all the things that make kids who are different feel safe and loved and accepted? The same people demanding that you act and asking you to do things for them, their taglines are about freedom from government. Quote, "We do not co-parent with the government," they say. Yet, when you did not do their bidding this time and last time or the time before, they ran to the government, to a state legislator, to sue you. And now, they've gone to the same legislator from the government and are having him bring this pride flag issue as a state bill. Mr. Bolso has already filed this for the 2024 session. I hope, when these groups continue to come to you, you will see this hypocrisy and charade for what it is. It's hate and discrimination and intolerance against children, and it doesn't belong in our schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Neuhauser.
I'm going to talk fast today, okay? I've been working on this three-minute thing all day, okay? So I'm bleeding out a lot. My name is Carol Neuhauser, and I live in Franklin. I am here to reinforce my concern for the present primary curriculum and that it's missing important experiences in culture and history, which are essential for young children's emotional and social development. Culture is defined as becoming knowledgeable of traditions within the family and the community. These cultural attributes help a child create himself, define himself, and create his self-worth. The most respected researcher in emotional and social development is Eric Erickson, who identified levels of natural development that human beings worked their way through to become emotionally and socially healthy. I am reading a quote from Eric Erickson and Fred Rogers. We all know Fred Rogers. "The tradition is, to human beings, is what instinct is to animals. Imagine the chaos if animals lost their instincts. So would it be if humans were to lose all their traditions? The study of history helps keep traditions alive. When we study how our ancestors dealt with challenges, we can learn from their successes and failures and fashion our responses to challenge in natural, human ways." Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood on PBS was the best example of promoting guidance and support for both children and adults and developing skills and attitudes for emotional and social growth. He studied with Eric Erickson and Dr. Margaret McFarland, who was a child psychologist who guided for 20 years the program content to conform to developmental theory, which includes the importance of culture. Today, our society is in a mental health crisis from COVID and the environment that it created. Mental health professionals are facing a critical situation which they have never faced before, which means that the public schools need to include more cultural curriculum activities which show the traditions of Franklin and the citizens who serve as models that result in better choices and behavior. By including more information and experiences of the Franklin culture, the people, organizations, facilities, and volunteers who continue their commitment to the well-being of this and future generations. That is how we become the people we are. The present curriculum was designed as a one-size-fits-all for all schools. My question is, how do young children receive the optimal understanding of who they are and a sense of self-worth from people, places, and experiences that are not their own?
Thank you, Ms.-
How does one-size-fits-all lessons lead to better social and emotional development? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Maggie McLean.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I will be speaking on the topic of flags in schools. School is a place where students come to learn how to think, not what to think. A place where kids learn mutual respect for each other and their teachers rather than exclusiveness. A building that fosters unity in the community and not division. Allowing flags other than the American flag and the Tennessee state flag sets the stage for division in the student body and staff. Public schools are funded by taxpayer dollars and therefore should represent and be fair to all taxpayers. No matter what side of the aisle you land on, the U.S. flag and state flag is the only fair representation of us all. Teachers or staff who wish to display different flags have a right to free speech. However, just like a teacher cannot share their religion in school while in a professional and instructional setting, they also should not be able to share other personal opinions demonstrated by a flag. Other flags in school are exclusive to their own separate groups and opinions. Not every taxpayer who is funding the school is represented by these. Let all of us here in Tennessee be represented and included in the schools we pay for, rather than sowing seeds of division and disrespect. The American flag and state flag foster unity and respect and should stay the only permissible flags in a public educational space. Let's educate our diverse population of children that despite our individual differences, we can unite and work together as one under the American and state flags and with the common identity as Americans and Tennesseans. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Keese.
Thank you for your continued service to Williamson County students. Many years of trial and error have taught me that when I run into an obstacle, I need to be clear about what problem I'm trying to solve. I can think my problem is X, so I solve for X, but realize later, when my problem has continued to exist, that my problem was really Y. It seems to me that you all have faced similar challenges in the last several years. Parents have said to you that they are concerned that teaching a full and accurate history will make their children feel bad because white people have done bad things. Parents have said that they don't know how or don't want to talk to their children about what a pride flag represents. So you all should prevent teachers from displaying these in schools. Parents have said they don't want their children to have access to certain books. So you're supposed to limit all children's access. All parents want to protect their children. But it isn't your job to protect the feelings of parents regarding the challenges of being human. All people, no matter their skin color, have done and will continue to do bad and good things in the world. Some truths will challenge our beliefs about the world. Some truths are hard to see and hear. I want to suggest that just because a parent brings you their problem, that doesn't automatically make it a school board problem. Your job is to support children's education. To do that, your role is to support student access to a broad range of information and to support the teachers who educate them. One way you can do that is to give them some autonomy over their physical space, such as their desks. Your job is to create a safe environment for all students and teachers. A safe environment is one that respects people's rights to their own opinions, even to display evidence of those opinions. It does not condone the putting forth of opinion as fact. It does not condone the denigration of anyone for any reason. It is reasonable to expect an atmosphere of respect, understanding, and hopefully kindness. The world is an increasingly global community. My children need to know how to navigate themselves in this world with integrity, respect, and kindness. I believe you are committed to an environment that models that behavior. And I absolutely expect that you will not try to shield them from life's complexities. That would be to suggest that the world is somehow less complicated than it really is. That would be a twisting of reality so grave as to constitute an outright lie. Teach them the truth, all of the truth. Support our teachers. Being respectful and kind doesn't mean we don't have to have difficult conversations. But it does mean we need to know that we're safe in doing so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next guest is Barb Sturgeon.
I'm Barb Sturgeon. You all may know I'm a county commissioner. And it's nice to come back to the school board meeting. I haven't been here in a long time. So, and I really appreciate your public comment. It's very healthy on both sides. And I wouldn't say anyone who takes the time to come up here is wasting anybody's time. So I appreciate you guys and your service to the county. I got a glimpse of the capital, five-year capital plan, and it's almost doubled from the last one. And it's nearly a billion dollars. And so what I'd like to ask is, do you have a presentation or something that will explain to the commission why it's doubled, especially when the growth statistics for the county have, like, flattened? Or even, I understand there's 400 fewer students this year than last year. So I saw eight new schools planned, and I just, I want to understand what y'all are thinking. Because we've got a lot of other expenses at the county. You've got a Triple J project coming up that's $325 million plus lots of other things. So I was not anticipating a billion dollars on the capital plan. But this is your purview. And so I'm trusting you guys will explain it to the commission somehow. Because, I mean, we don't have to approve it. We just accept whatever you come up with. But I would like to know why it's there. So, anyway, thank you. Take care.
And our final speaker is Genevieve Pejose.
Hi. I would like to apologize if I don't have anything written out. There's a little bit of a mix-up. I didn't know I was going to be able to speak tonight. But I do want to start by thanking you guys, because now we have three minutes, so I can add that in today, regarding the flags in schools and teachers becoming activists. Everybody is talking about just that little tiny flag in Bethesda, right? That is not all this is about. There is a massive flag in Centennial High School. There are multiple flags throughout Franklin High School. Almost all of the Starz counselors in the high schools, I don't know about middle schools. I do know about the high schools. If you, I could send you what's on their front door. Most of them are their pronouns in whichever, whether it be a trans flag, a pride flag, whichever one, right outside the counselor's doors. We also have found out that during Book Ban Week, you had teachers going to school with shirts on that say, "Bring back banned books." I just want to understand why we're allowing schools to become a place for political activism. It's not where it should be. I don't hate anybody, despite comments made. I actually do care about every single student. I want everybody to feel welcome and safe when they are in school. And I do believe that that happens under the American flag, where every student is represented. Not a small flag that my daughter is excluded from. Again, like the student said, one from high school, it's tax dollars, it's a place of neutrality. And I just want schools to be, you know, a place of education, not indoctrination. And it really is starting here. And I did move here a year ago from New Jersey, and it started small like this. And then I would roll up to a car line, and you had teachers with Pride Month shirts on, BLM shirts on. And it's just not what belongs in our schools. It's not why I moved, to be honest. So I just don't even know why it's here. I didn't think it was going to be. So, not here because I hate anybody, not here because of anything like that. Just want my daughter to be able to go to school and, yeah, just learn, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic. And that's it. So, thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. And thank you again to everybody who came tonight to speak. We do appreciate everyone's comments, and no one is wasting anyone's time by being here and speaking to us. So thank you so much. And I do want to go back and acknowledge our deputies Mitchell Britton and Eddie Cutlass for being here with us tonight. Thank you so much for being here to serve with us. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Welch. Do we have a second? Mr. Brown, thank you. Do we have any comment or questions about the agenda? All right. Board members, we will move to vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. That motion passes to approve the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Open the floor for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Clements. I'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. Welch? Thank you. We can move to a vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. That motion approved the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda are the October 23rd school board meeting minutes, the 2023-24 hearing officers list, the LEA compliance report, which is an annual agenda item, recommendation for field trip fee requests, the Creekside Elementary School outdoor classroom, the Page High School softball facility, the Summit High School batting cage modification, and the City of Franklin request for a sanitary sewer easement at Legacy Middle School, and the Franklin request for a sanitary sewer easement at Oakview Elementary School. Next item on the agenda is communications to the board. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board. And I hope everyone had a really good Thanksgiving break. We heard so many good things from our families about the calendar and from our staff about the calendar. So thank you, guys, for that work that you did well over a year ago related to that. I did want to give a little bit of an update on what we discussed at our most recent work session. But first, I want to welcome, we have a number of principals here in the audience, and thank you all for coming to the board meeting tonight. We talked about a number of significant things at the work session that the state is bringing to us. Number one, we spent a lot of time last year talking about what we call the third-grade retention law. And I know there hasn't been nearly as much discussion about that this year as last year, but those rules still apply for our current third graders. And so our faculty and our staff and our leadership at the elementary schools continue to work on that and make that a focus. You may recall that we spent a lot of time specifically working on that, and you spent some time working with our legislators about making some adjustments based on how that law was originally passed. Ultimately, we had one student who whose parent chose, after discussions with the principals, to be retained related to those requirements for summer school, et cetera. Also, what doesn't get discussed much is that third-grade retention law still rolls to fourth grade, and we talked about that at the work session. Currently, we have 134 fourth graders who have to show what the state has described as adequate growth in the fourth-grade T-CAP, so that they are not retained in fourth grade and matriculate up to fifth grade. The state is currently working on a formula to define what constitutes adequate growth. It's based in part on the TVAS growth expectation probability with a formula that goes beyond that, divides a probability by eight based on the eight years that students will be taking the state English test and projects that the students need to show adequate growth by that eighth so that they can theoretically be projected to, by the time they're sophomores, taking English II actually pass. We're going to be having those specific conversations with the parents of those 134 students so that they can grasp that as much as possible as their children prepare for that fourth-grade test. Second, I want to mention to you that years ago, really back in 2017, the state passed a law that every school would get a single-letter grade. State legislature delayed that here and there over the course of the last six years. And ultimately, next month is the date that the State Department of Education projects all schools will get single-letter grades. They shared with us in recent weeks the formula for that. It will be based on a combination of last year's T-CAP, last year's TVAS, the state test, with some additional pieces of the formula. We talked about that detail. We're going to be fine with those numbers. But I want to emphasize to you that that single-letter grade doesn't really tell you a whole lot. The components of that formula are items that we follow. We follow achievement. We follow growth. We look at some of our student populations that are at risk and work on focusing our efforts to serve all those students. But that letter grade will show up across the state sometime in December. We celebrate and have celebrated reward schools over these last few years, where the state gives a congratulatory thank you to our schools that meet those criteria. I don't know yet whether they will do reward schools this year compared with this new system coming on. But we're going to do a little bit of work ourselves and discuss as a leadership team those focus points, those success points that our schools have that really mean something to show that student achievement and that student growth. We'll continue to celebrate our students and teachers. But there's a new one coming that might be a little confusing to folks when it comes out, presumably sometime in December. Also, I want to mention that we spent some time with a number of folks in our communities, specifically in the Spring Hill area, in the Grassland area, and in Nolansville to discuss what we've been discussing for a few months, running a pilot for our bus routes. We know that Tennessee law does not require us to provide bus service for general education students. But if we do, their standard is, in essence, a mile and a half, that we must provide a bus stop within a mile and a half of a home or a school. Traditionally, we've done a lot more than that. We've done bus stops basically every half-mile if safety allows it, based upon the idea that a student would walk one lap around a track, a quarter of a mile if they happen to live the furthest from those spots. We are piloting in the Nolansville area, Nolansville High School, Mill Creek Middle, Mill Creek Elementary, a pilot to move closer towards that state standard to see the extent to which it will free up bus drivers to address a chronic bus driver shortage that we have and evaluate potential impacts that might not be foreseeable. For example, might that affect traffic at the schools to the point where it might not be feasible? Might it affect bus route times positively or negatively? And we had those community meetings. We let you all know at the work session that we've chosen that Nolansville group. let you all know at the work session that we've chosen that Nolansville group. Our staff right now is working on the specific bus stop locations. We intend to have bus stop hubs at appropriate locations. In other words, shrink the number of bus stops, but have those bus stop hubs at safe locations in the neighborhoods in those areas, and also reduce that bus service very close to school to encourage what other districts have called parent responsibility zones. We will give all that detail to the families in those schools before we take a break for the winter break. We will allow them to click on and see the projected time for the bus stops. Generally speaking, those bus stops are going to be closer to school start time than they currently are, because we will have fewer stops. And we will also send a reminder out to them the day before school starts back second semester that this will be implemented first day of second semester. So, we're going to make sure that we communicate that before and after the break to make sure parents are fully informed on that. And we're going to monitor that. We're going to see how that goes. We have some projections on some bus save time, but we know that there are some variables in the community with traffic that may impact that for us long term. When we had those meetings with our community, many of you attended one or more of those meetings, we actually had some folks in Nolansville say, "Pick us. Give us a shot at this. We think this will work." It's not 100%. Not everybody said that, but I'm looking forward to having those conversations with our Nolansville families to project out how that goes. Finally, I did want to thank our public speakers. We have thoughtfully worked through making sure there is time for public comment. We did this many years before the state initiated a requirement a year or so ago. The school setting is one of those fundamental places where folks do have that opportunity to speak and to share. You all know that a lot of the content that was shared tonight was related to the personal items of teachers, and we've had those discussions. We certainly want to make sure that anytime anyone hears any suggestion that a professional teacher might be talking about their personal opinions, let us know. We will certainly investigate that, and we talk about that regularly. Also, we want to make sure that we respect that teachers do have that personal space as well, and can share their, and can have some personal items related to that. So, it is that difficult professional balance that has been a longstanding standard in this country for decades that we want to make sure that we honor. So, of course, folks continue to communicate with us about those issues. So, with that, Madam Chair, I want to mention one other public comment. Commissioner Sturgeon mentioned our five-year capital plan. We do have that on the agenda. We spoke to that at our work session. We'll share some additional detail with you when that item comes up for vote. And of course, as always, I speak to the county commission typically over the three separate meetings before their meeting. We have our work session, we have our policy committee meeting, we have our voting meeting. Subsequent to that, the county commission has an education committee, they have a budget committee, and then their full voting meeting. So, we will have multiple opportunities to share those issues, just as we always do. So, that's my report. Madam Chair, the next subitem on the agenda is Student, Staff, and School Spotlights. Traditionally, as you all know, Carol Byrd-Song announces our state and national winners. We've made sure for years that that's what we celebrate. Good or bad, we don't celebrate second place. We celebrate first at the state and national level. I want to start this first time with the first, if you guys would shift your slide, the first spotlight.
Thank you, thank you.
Carol Byrd-Song, I'm so tempted to mispronounce your name. Carol Byrd-Song was named the inaugural Tennessee School Communicator of the Year by the Tennessee School Public Relations Association.
You got that right.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay.
And I also want to, I've gone a little bit further than Carol might typically. I found the purpose and reason for this award. So, I want to read this from the Tinsbra Professional Group. "The purpose of this award is to recognize school communicators who exhibit excellence in the areas of leadership, communication, professionalism, and community involvement." So, congratulations, Carol Byrd-Song, for your state award.
Thank you very much. I'm moving on now, and we are going to celebrate our student athletes this evening. And I want you to cheer on the Brentwood High Girls Cross Country Team, because they have won for the fourth consecutive year the state title. And their coaches are Robert Pottness and Michelle Doty. And then also, this is Claire Stegall, and Claire is also a repeat state champion from Nolansville High School. She won the individual championship, and she's also a national qualifier. So, we're excited for Claire. Her coach is Christopher Damentra. And then, from Rabelwood High School, this is Miles Raymer, and he is the 5K Run Cross Country State Champion. His coach is Pete Mueller. And while we are only celebrating athletics this evening, I'm going to tease for January some perfect ACT scores. And I would just say also one last thing. If you want to see all of our other student achievers, please read InFocus, which comes out every Tuesday directly to your email where we celebrate all students and staff. So, congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my report.
Thank you. And Mr. Welch, did you have some feedback?
I did. Thank you. So, first, I like the way we get the plug for the InFocus at the end. That's the type of communication forward skills that gets you nominated as the top communications person in the state, I guess. Mr. Changle, I want to ask you a little bit about, we've seen this proposal coming from the governor's office to expand vouchers statewide in all communities and here in Williamson County, and want to see what you know about that, especially in light, kind of looking back at the history of it. The first voucher proposal or legislation was passed in 2020. It was pushed by then Speaker Cassidy. This was prior to him being indicted in his bribery and kickback conspiracy. And it was passed at the time, really with promises that this is only in failing districts. It's very limited. I remember our state legislative delegation, where Representative Johnson told us very clearly that, you know, he would do everything within his power to keep it out of Williamson County. And yet, here we are, you know, and even four years later, and the governor's coming out with a proposal to spread this statewide. You know, I haven't seen a lot of details beyond, I guess, some things that are being reported in the media. Channel 5 had a thing. It's, what, $7,000 per student, which, if I'm not mistaken, is more money than the state gives us per student. So, that was kind of an interesting observation that, you know, for a private for-profit school that doesn't have to accept all students, can pick and choose who they want, does not provide transportation, does not provide public input to their curriculum, does not provide public elections to their supervisory board, that they're providing more money to those institutions than they would to a public institution, which is actually owned by the public, you know, in terms of public dollars. So, can you sort of speak a little bit on what you know about the proposal so far, what you've seen, or what's been shared by the Department of Education or anyone else?
Thank you. I will say that we were first notified of this by some media outlets who asked us our opinion on it. And the short answer we've given them is, we can't answer that until we see the proposal. So, as I understand it, there's been a report that the governor has a plan to extend vouchers statewide. The bit of the detail I've seen from the news reports include a plan for up to 10,000 students this coming year with a projection to increase that in subsequent years. I've also seen some reports that some of the state legislators, again, in the legislative branch, have talked that they're projecting that this will happen. I do know that the governor has scheduled a press conference for tomorrow. There's speculation about what that might be about, that it might be about this topic. You actually, in your articulation, asked a lot of questions that really kind of align with what we're talking about. We would have a lot of questions. What will be funded? What won't be funded? How will it be funded? Does this affect the new TISA model that funds us? Are the projections that have been shared in the media somewhere around $7,000 accurate? The state has a base amount that they give, that they project that public schools are to get into spend for individual students, but they actually give us a fractional amount of that based upon our ability to pay and the county share. So, what do those funds really mean for us? So, we've got a lot of questions. The accountability side of it, I've seen some secondary media reports about the pilots that have been done in Davidson County, and Shelby County, and Hamilton County, Nashville, Memphis, Chattanooga, regarding how many students took TCAP and their performance on it compared to their own counties. Again, those are secondary reports. How will that accountability be structured, and how will they compare to us? As I understand it, the legislation that was passed in 2020 was a four-year pilot, and so, we're now going to be three years in. So, what's their plan for that pilot? We have a lot of questions. I know that you all speak with your legislators, and often, the legislation is submitted very closely in time to when the debates start on the floor within the committees and subcommittees. I do encourage you to stay informed on that. We're going to do that ourselves. We're going to make sure that as much as possible, we grasp what does get presented to us. But we've got questions. And another one you touched on that's a concern for me, what about students with disabilities? How, you know, what does that mean for them? Students transferring back and forth, how do they plan to structure that with testing and that kind of thing? I could go on and on about the questions, but we do have a lot of questions.
Follow-up. You mentioned a fractional amount. What do we receive from the state per student on average, or the average student?
That's hard to answer right now, but let me tell you, and I'm going to look over at Rachel. Because we're at the early stages of TISA. So, the TISA structure, I'm going to give you an approximate number as a base, somewhere around $3,800 is a base. That's about the base amount that we get for a student. But that's not all, because there are some other funding mechanisms that add to that. But when you hear a base of $6,850, for us, that means somewhere around $3,800 and change. Because the base that the state structures is based on a projection of the total minimum amount that ought to be spent on a student. And then, they have the local share and the state share separated from that. And then, they apply a fiscal capacity indicator to that. So, for us, it continues to drop, because the fiscal capacity formula puts us at the lowest. So, that's the base. Certain disabilities get additional direct funding. They also do some direct funding for certain programming, career technical programming, et cetera. There's some additional funds. I can't give you an average per student, but it is not that $7,000 projection that you mentioned.
Thirty-eight hundred. You know, the approximation we're trying to give, that's about 152 million. Looking at what's reported in the media, the voucher amount of $7,000, the equivalent of that would be 280 million if we were funded the same way by the state, the same way that they're proposing to, the governor's proposing to fund for-profit schools. So, about a $128 million difference, if I'm doing the numbers right here, and I am. And then, on top of that, I think there's also some talks going on at the state level about not accepting federal dollars, which I know doesn't impact us as much, but that's, what, about one and a half, $2 billion?
Oh, no. Well, one and a half to 2% of our budget.
I understand, but the amount?
Oh, the amount, Rachel? Oh, I'm sorry. So, it's, oh, sorry. For us, it's about 20 million. That includes our food service budget as well? No, that's just our operating budget. We get about 20 million from federal?
No, I understand that. But I mean, the overall amount that's allocated from federal for education, which the legislature is looking at bypassing, is, I believe it's what, it's in the billion. It's over a billion. And you're right, so looking at taking that out as well. And to your knowledge with vouchers, would there be any requirement that the schools accepting them would have to accept any all students that apply?
I don't know yet, because I haven't seen the legislation. At this stage, based on the pilot, I think the answer to that question is no, that was not required.
Well, choice. It really is the school's choice. They're under the current frame. They get to pick and choose the students, unlike a public institution where we accept all students.
And a number of private schools are participating in those spots. And I don't know the answer to whether they apply their same admission standards. But from a programming standpoint, it's difficult to visualize that they would be able to provide a service that they hadn't been provided up to that point.
Questions, maybe you don't know the answer. Do you know if the school accepting it would have to be an accredited institution?
Based on the projection that was shared in the media, categories one through five of the state structure, non-public school categories one through five are at least projected, based on the reports, to be subject to this proposal. That would include a mix of accredited and non-accredited schools.
Non-accredited for-profit private school would be part of it, potentially getting, I'd say nearly twice as much as what Williamson County Schools receives in state funding?
Based on the reports, that's a possibility. And again, these questions trigger. Those are some of the questions that, you know, ultimately, the state legislature is going to have to evaluate as they're considering this.
Voucher proposal did come to Williamson County. Would it be at the full 7,000, or would it be at the 3,800, the equivalency that Williamson County Schools receives?
I don't know that. What I can speak to is what we receive, and it's that 3,800 and change base, plus the additional direct funding. I don't know what the legislature intends. The document that was shared in that Channel 5 article included just the clear 7,000 per student. And so, we are very curious if the governor speaks to that tomorrow, what he would propose. I do know enough, based on my professional experience, let's find out from the source what the proposal is.
Local match is part of that, too, correct? Local funding?
Yes. So, that 6,850 base that I talked about earlier, that we get a fraction of, that base is based on a projection of the minimum amount that the state expects each school system to fund students. And a portion of that is local funding, and a portion of that is state funding. So, the locals would be responsible for at least that base amount. Now, the reality is to provide the quality of education that we provided substantially more, and our county has historically picked that up.
One year in a public institution. I'll wrap it up. I know, I can see I'm getting the look here. So, last, thank you, Angela. I'll wrap it up here. As I understand, the requirement is one year in a public institution before you can apply?
I read the document, not knowing its source. It actually has a prioritized list for students who are currently in the program. Then, they have a poverty factor, and then they have a factor for those in, well, there's, I forgot. Then they have a poverty factor, and then they have a factor for those in, well, I forgot, off the top of my head, the list. Oh, those in the item you mentioned, and then potentially others after that.
With that, just trying to draw this conclusion, we can potentially see an influx of students into Williamson County Schools, looking to get eligibility for the program with the end goal of moving it. So it would require a large hiring influx immediately followed by layoffs, which would potentially increase this number of students overall that would have to be subsidized by local tax dollars, potentially leading to a local tax increase.
I haven't seen any indication related to an influx into Williamson County Schools for this. There may be something that I'm not aware of. But that's been discussed from time to time prior to legislative bills coming out. Might they open up the, you know, the choice from one county to the other? To your point, if that were to happen, that would be something the county commission would really need to pay attention to, because the county commission funds about two-thirds of our total expenditure. And if that includes students coming from other counties, that would substantially change the responsibility and burden on our county government.
Thought about that, but I guess the other way applies is it's a student here receiving voucher, attending a school across the county lines. So are they funding an institution outside of the county with local dollars?
I don't know about the state projection on what they would expect from county governments based on that.
Understood. Okay. Well, I appreciate it, and a lot to be answered, I guess, is the short answer. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Board Chair Report. The only thing I want to bring up is that we will not have board meetings in December. So we will see everyone after this meeting in January. Have happy holidays. Next item on the agenda is new business, and first section is the 2023-2024 School Board Budget. Item one is approval of the General Purpose School Fund Amendment, 11.23, state special education preschool grant, in the amount of $765,154. Mr. Golden, any comments about this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a state grant for our, it's listed as preschool, it's what we call our early childhood program. Do recommend approval for this grant.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr. Haw, second from Mr. Welch. Thank you. We'll open the floor for discussion. No discussion on this item, so board members, let's cast our votes.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The motion passed to approve the General Purpose School Fund Amendment for the Special Education Preschool Grant, in the amount of $765,000. Second item is the approval of the General Purpose School Fund Amendment for United Way Grant, in the amount of $316,000. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like you stated, this is a United Way grant, it's actually for tutoring. Do recommend approval of this United Way grant.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Ms. Clemens, thank you. Mr. Welch, second, thank you. We'll open the floor for discussion. Okay, no discussion. Board members, please cast your votes.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passed for the General Purpose School Fund Amendment for the United Way Grant, in the amount of $316,000. Final item under School Board Budget is the Approval of Education Capital Projects Fund, intra-category page high Phase 4, in the amount of $1,175,000. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request of intra-category to fund out of contingency, 1.175 million, which is our projected final cost for the page building project. This happens to be the last bit of Phase 4. And I will say, this is in part the result of costs jumping up substantially over time during the course of this project that's triggered this need. Do recommend approval.
Awesome. Do we have a motion? Mr. Beasley? Have a second? Mr. Priya, thank you. And we'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Jason, I didn't ask this at the work session, but it occurred to me between then and now to ask, and maybe I'm putting you on the spot here, because I didn't ask this before the meeting. Do you have an estimate going back over the life of this project at Page, from Phase 1 through this Phase 4 final payment, what that total cost has been to basically create a brand-new school, essentially?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'm looking over at Mr. King. We did do that math over time and compare that to a total build, and it was less. We're expanding this school's capacity from about 1,200 to 2,200. I'll have to give you guys an email on that, because I don't remember that. That's a good question, but it is something we've worked on, I just can't remember that number right now.
I remember, back maybe a year ago, having this conversation, and I remember the number was going to be less than it would have been if you started from scratch and built a brand-new school. So I just think in the context of all of the discussions we're about to have going forward on capital plans and new buildings and managing our population, that's an interesting point of reference.
That's a good point.
Doesn't work everywhere, but it's a potential point of reference, yeah.
We'll make sure to let you all know that. And that might also be something for us to share with the commission as well.
Okay. No further comments or questions? We'll go ahead and move to a vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. The motion passed to approve the Education Capital Projects Fund for the intra-category page high Phase 4 expansion. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a good discussion about the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, and I want to point out a couple of highlights. Number one, the eight schools that are on the list are the same eight schools that were on the list last year. The big difference, there's really actually two big differences. One, we do project the cost will be higher, because we're out in time. Two, we have pushed back or delayed every single one of those projects based on the student enrollment numbers that we have this year. And the projection here is that we don't expect to ask for any funding for a new school until May of 2025, at the earliest, based on this five-year capital plan. The total numbers in the aggregate are substantially higher, because we project costs are going to continue to increase, but our short-term request has substantially decreased. Now, what we've seen with student enrollment so far is one year. We also have structured this, that you all will actually be reviewing this five-year capital plan next year before we make a request for any substantial new construction money. So we'll have one more year under our belts of trying to see, are these numbers that we're seeing a trend? And I know Ms. Clemens actually mentioned some of the demographic data countywide, not even just for schools, but countywide, with ages of students, ages of children coming into the county, that's actually decreased. The folks moving in tend to be older, at least based on the countywide data. So we're very concerned about it. We think the wise thing to do is to let the commission know, we project out that these items may very well come, and you need to be prepared for them, but they are not coming in the short term, based on that short-term information we have.
Thank you. We do need to... Go ahead and get a motion on the floor to approve this. Mr. Welch, second, from Mr. Galbraith. And then we'll go ahead and open the floor. Mr. Brown?
Madam Chair, I'm going to reiterate a couple of comments I made at the work session, just as a refresher for myself and for the group and for the benefit of the public. I do think this is a rational plan, and a couple of reasons for that. If you look at, first of all, what you said, Jason, about these projects being pushed out already, others likely to be pushed out again, if the population projections kind of stay where they're going on the same trajectory. So I think context really matters, and I appreciate Commissioner Sturgens bringing this to us, raising her concerns about this. But one point I made at the meeting the other night is that it's really easy to go to the bottom right corner of this document and see an almost-billion-dollar number. It's an eye-popping number. But it's also really important, I think, for us and for the commission to put this in context. And if you look at, I made the point the other night, that $187 million of this number, of this total number, is not in the five-year plan, it's actually in Year 6 and beyond. So already, you can reduce that number by 187 million. The other important point is that in the first three years of this plan, if my numbers are right, you're only projecting a potential for 175 million of the total, roughly 800 million. If you take out that first 187, we're below 800. And of that 800, or 775, or whatever the number ends up being, we're actually only projecting 175 of that in the first three years. So I think from a planning perspective, there's nothing imminent that I think we or the commission have to really worry about from a spending standpoint or a debt standpoint. Certainly, if things change, you know, in the short term, then we revisit that. But I think the point to make is, this is a plan, we all, I think many of us said this the other night, this is a plan, it's not in concrete, it's not written in stone, we're not obligating ourselves, nor is the county obligating itself. But I think this is, when you put that all in context, which I think is the fair thing to do, this is a reasonable, rational plan, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. And again, the thoughtfulness and the honesty to say, if we don't need a project, we're willing to push it out, which you guys have done, so thank you.
Galbraith?
So along the same lines as Josh, I went back and I looked at one of the schools that's close to my district and serves a lot of people in my district, but the split log middle school, after we opened Jordan, we made the decision to not open the middle school, because it wasn't needed at the time. And to those who were worried about the billion dollars in debt, though, what that's caused us in delay, and I'm not saying that we should have built it when we didn't need to, but on our 2016-2017 capital plan, we were set to open this North Middle School on split log in the fall of '18, and it was going to cost $24 million. And so, over the years, it went to 35 million. We were going to open it in '21, that was in '18 and '19. Now, last year, it was on the plan for $73 million to open in '25, and now it's set to open in '27 for $104 million. And so, much more so than the cost of waiting, and this is the exact same school. We didn't double the size of this thing, we didn't add granite countertops and marble floors. This is trying to look at, and I'll credit Eric and Brian and the Construction Department, like, I'm pretty sure these are overestimates, but I think they have, they've been on the other side of pricing at today's dollars for something that we're projecting out two years, and then the number is too low. We go to the county commission and we ask for an amount of money based on the prices two years ago, and then we're back having to ask for, you know, having to come up with contingency funds to spend. Overages, which I can guarantee you, none of those overages were waste, and they were all a result of direct increases in cost. And so, obviously, we're willing to push things back. The second point is, we do create this plan for visibility into what could happen if we meet the population increases. But that's not to say that we're, there's going to be some, there might be the McFarland Road area elementary school, like, we might very well need that McFarland Road, like, because if they go about and Southern Land builds the 750 houses or whatever, that they're going to do that, like, we can't solve that problem by rezoning people to, I mean, Hunter's Bend or whatever. I mean, it's just not a, I was like, there's no reason to impact family after family after family after family to fill some empty seats at Hunter's Bend or Walnut Grove. I was like, we might need to, I mean, we have, how many schools have we closed, Jason? Pine Wood is the only one that I can think of.
Pine Wood's the only one in the last 20-plus years, yeah.
So it's not out of the question if we have long-term demographic shifts, but short-term, we're not doing a disservice by building schools continually, even though we might have some shifts in population somewhere. It's not unreasonable, and it's not being a bad steward of your money to build schools where the population is increasing. And finally, if we, I mean, I think we've shown, we've pushed this project back nine years, okay? If we end up having to build it, and it ends up having to cost, if it's $100 million, then we know that if we wait, then it will likely cost us more, much more than the cost of debt service in the short term. It's going to cost us more if we put it off another two years and it costs $115 million then. I think it's appropriate to be thinking about building these schools when we need them, only when we need them, but I mean, this is, but I really appreciate staff being realistic and really conservative on how much it's going to be, even though it makes the numbers look really big. So I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. If I may add this, we do bid these out, and we take lowest and best bids, which effectively means lowest. Every once in a while, we have a best issue with someone who's shown that they can't perform, and we value-engineer those jobs on top of that. So certainly, we have data on square footage costs, et cetera, that I know some folks in the profession look at as well.
Thank you. Ms. Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can appreciate what Josh and Jay said. I see it a little differently, and I know that this, the five-year plan is just a plan, is a forecast, and I can appreciate that we hit the pause button when we saw a decline in our student enrollment this year. I think there's two reasons I can't rubber-stamp this through. And while I appreciate the work that, Brian, you guys have done a great job, but I appreciate the work you've done, but the numbers, the census, that Mike Madison, I forwarded you guys the census numbers, it's just, we're losing school age population, and we've talked about this. We're at a flat, at best, maybe a little decline. So I appreciate the fact that we do hit the pause button, and I'm appreciative that we are keeping an eye on those numbers and reacting to those numbers. And I think before I go on to the second reason, I want to throw in there, we have had so many, and I appreciate it so much from Central Office, you know, with the calendar, Dr. Webb did a great job explaining that, these PowerPoint presentations. I would love to have a PowerPoint presentation on the five-year plan. I think this would be great, so we wouldn't have so many questions. It would really kind of give us an understanding of the thoughts of eight new schools with flat numbers. And so I think that would be really helpful going forward in the years to come. I would appreciate that. And then the second reason that I can't rubber-stamp this through is just our budget. Our county is in debt, and it has, since 2018, it has doubled. I really became fascinated with the growth in Williamson County. In 2017, I remember being just shocked that we had 475 million in debt. I was like, I can't believe that. And now we're at one, over a billion dollars in debt. And so just in those six years, we've gone from 475 million to 1.1 billion, and we just cannot, we cannot sustain this debt. just cannot, we cannot sustain this debt. And, you know, from the state comptroller site, out of 95, I think we have 95 counties in Tennessee, we have the second greatest debt. This is not per capita. The only county that has greater debt than we do is Davidson. And so that, and we are the sixth in size. So, we've got a lot of debt, and I'm concerned about that. I think Elliot Mitchell brought up some great ideas in the work session. I like having the numbers to be accountable with the county commission, just being creative, cost-effective ways of using our taxpayer dollars, the cottages on school sites. And so, I have notes here, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I get everything in I wanted to say. But those are the two main reasons, and I just, I can't rubber stamp this through. But I do appreciate the work.
I do project that we'll have some portables at some of our schools before the next school is built. And specifically, realistically, it's going to be in the Nolansville area. Based on what we have seen is, we're still seeing some growth on the east side and a reduction in the central and west. So, and we do that from time to time. I know when we had portables at College Grove before we opened up Arrington, and we'll definitely see that again. Or the cottages, I think, as they were described.
And I will add, what was I going to say? There was one other thing I was going to add. Oh, that we've talked about this, the municipalities, that we're seeing these growths in this area where the municipalities are allowing, you know, the Nolansville and Spring Hill, and maybe, hopefully, the state will work with us to help work with that funding in those areas.
I will tell you, final comment related to that, June Lake, I think, is going to be a really good example for us. June Lake is a development in Spring Hill that has multiple thousands projections of homes, but the build-out schedule is going to be very telling. Right now, they project a 20-year build-out schedule. So, that's why looking at it annually and really seeing what those developers are doing is going to be important.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. So I guess first, I just want to say, I appreciate the points made by colleagues. I think Josh made some really excellent, you know, sort of larger points about putting some of the numbers in big context. And then, Jay, I know who gets excited any time, he sees a spreadsheet with lots of little numbers on them. It makes my brain bleed personally, but, you know, we went through it in detail and went over it, and a lot of explanation, and I know the staff put a lot of work and thought, and this has been developed over, you know, not just recently, over years. So I think trying to describe this vote, whether you vote for it, against it, describing it as rubber stamping it, I think is unfortunate, and I think it disparages the effort that staff put in and a lot of the hours and time that we spent going through this, whether, whatever, you know, resolution you come to is fine, but, you know, rubber stamping, describing it as rubber stamping it, I gotta be honest, doesn't really sit right with me. I'm going to give a kind of a quick analogy, I know it took a lot of time, so I'll make it real fast. A lot of you know, I was a Marine brat growing up. I was a Marine Corps infantry officer, and from my junior and senior year of high school, we moved from Panama, where we'd lived for three years, to Twenty-Nine Palms, California. And, you know, because we hadn't seen a lot of family, we took kind of a long cross-country drive to get there, starting in Tennessee, to going up to Wisconsin, and then all the way out to Twenty-Nine Palms, California, in the back of an 88 Jeep Cherokee, one of those old ones, where tiny little matchbox thing, you know, two-door one. No better way to learn to hate your family than to be stuck with them and cross-country drive for about 10 days with them and the dog. But the point I'm making here roundabout is, the listed capacity of that vehicle in the back was five, three in the backseat. I can tell you darn well that, yes, you can fit three people in there, but it is far from optimum and convenient and conducive to enjoyable experience. And we can look at the schools and say, well, it's not 100%. You know, okay, what does that mean? We've got perfect little classrooms where everyone fits exactly, and every seat, and the right number, and everyone's taking the same class. Again, we're a public institution, we don't have the benefit of some of the private schools that, to sort of say, like, college that, once a class fills up, that's it, we add another class based upon, if another student wants biology and we're over the limit, we add another classroom and we sort of fit them in. So, just looking at, without context, simply doesn't quite work that way. Last thing I have, just real quick, I assume you're going to actually, you're going to make a presentation to the county commission on this?
Yes, I always do. And, you know, the suggestion was PowerPoint. I'll have a discussion with the mayor about that, at least from the county perspective. But thank you for that suggestion for us next year to do a PowerPoint. But we speak-
The presentation that you're going to present to the education committee, the budget committee, and the county commission as a whole? Those are the three that you referenced? Okay. And did you do that last year as well? And the year before that? And the year before that, did you do that? And then prior to you being superintendent, did Dr. Looney also do this?
I did it a lot, too.
Thank you. So there's a long history of you doing this presentation to the county, multiple times. Just want to confirm that.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I did want to make one comment related to your analogy. We are using our buildings in a lot of ways that don't show up on paper. RTI, response intervention, is one of those state requirements that we actually, it actually works, where we have interventionist, and so we're doing a lot more than the typical, what you might visualize as a teacher per classroom, because we are making sure we give those interventions. There's a lot of those additional requirements the state places on public schools, in addition to the accountability measures that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to make it as short as possible. What makes this plan work is that we can, you can go back and change it, you can go back and adjust it. All this is a projection. You know, we come together like this every three, four years, updated a lot, and Mr. Golden has, you know, backed off some schools for a year or two. What Ms. Clements had to say about the population is very, very true, especially with elementary school students. That's kind of scary, but scary for some areas. I just, without a projection like this, I don't know how we can honestly ask our planners to plan for the future. Just off the top of my head, June Lake, how many houses, excuse me, how many houses are planned there, Jason?
If I remember right, it's somewhere around 2,000. Yeah.
Family dwellings. We have on Thompson Station Road, I don't know how many apartment complexes going up. Tanner Berry has apartment complexes going up after they're done building. Parsons Valley on 431, 400, let's see, no, that's going to be 500, close to 500 homes. On the corner of 431 and Bethesda School Road, another 100, 150 homes. These aren't including, this is District 2 now, that's not including the Grove, Fall Grove, Falls Grove, and all down through Udalee and Covington. 31 and Thompson Station Road, they're breaking ground right now for another 300 homes. We're talking in the neighborhood of 2,000 homes in that area. Now granted, this may be 10 years out, but I can tell you, June Lake's got roads in. They're moving on that. And they're going to start, and they're going to go. So I think a plan like this is a safety zone. One that spoke about this had good things to say, and like Jay on the cost difference. But we can't just build a school like they did in the movie, build it and they will come. You know, we can't do that. And that's where it's at. So, one other question I wanted to ask Mr. Golden, have we approached the developers of June Lake yet about property for an elementary or whatever we need?
We've talked to the developers and to the city of Spring Hill about that. So the city of Spring Hill has shared with us that that's an expectation for that. Yes.
I don't see much swampland on there, but, you know, so we might get a good piece of ground, or... So anyhow, that's what I have to say. It's been a good conversation, we had a great conversation at the work session, but this is a projection, and we have to be able to look out. I mean, not only five years, but 10 years and beyond. Thank you.
Galbraith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'd take one thing that Ms. Clements said that I just wanted to clarify, and because I didn't necessarily agree with how she worded it, but the, so yes, it's true, our student population for one year, maybe even two years, is relatively flat. Also, during those two years, we haven't started a new school. We finished up a couple of additions that we've made. But this plan, I think it was said that the plan is actually based on a flat projection, and it's not. And so, we're planning, and if the projection, and usually, and I don't know if, I know Allison has this, but I think this usually comes with the five-year school capacity planning, right? And so, this is actually based on assumptions that if, and Allison has looked at all the development numbers that Dan talked about, I was like, that projects growth. Now, how long is it going to take? We don't know, right? I was like, but we have to be, we have to at least present a plan for if that growth happens on this schedule, then this is what it's going to take to build capacity for those schools. But like, but you do have those five-year projections?
We do. We do have those five-year projections. We've actually historically really done it in two ways to triangulate it, but it's largely driven by our experience with ages arriving at homes, the information the developers share with us about construction schedules, and the municipalities and county planners based on what they project. And to your point, sometimes we've been a little bit low, it's been more, sometimes we've been a little bit high, but that's the nature of projections. That's why for us, especially on the funding side, the columns are just as important as the roads, right? The column for that year, neither one is more important than the other. The funding requests come when it's apparent that we need that. I will also mention one final thing, that we've been talking about as a team. The construction schedules have gotten more difficult to fulfill because materials continue to be a challenge. I think you all know, we actually have an elevator component at one of our schools that was fabricated, and it was, it had to be redone. And so, examples like that, we've talked about projecting and stretching out our construction schedules a little bit as well, because the industry has changed here.
There's one last thing. I think if and when you did project out for five years that there wasn't going to be any growth, I would certainly expect to see, you know, we might end up increasing the timeline of this thing to show, because I think it is responsible to show, okay, here's the next, here's the next 10, 12 projects we have on the list that we think are going to come down the pipe. Because, I mean, Williamson County might not be growing at the rate that it was at, you know, where we were, we were growing 1,000, 1,500 students a year, but our percentage growth could slow to a really small number and still represent enough growth that we're, you know, it's still feasible that we're probably going to be building a school a year for the foreseeable future.
That's accurate, and you made a point as well, it may not just be the aggregate, it's also going to be regional for us, because the county is so large geographically.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments or thoughts that came up during the course of the discussion, and what you just said, what you just finished saying, Jason, was my first point, which is that we think about this all the time and talk about it in terms of the aggregate or in generalized terms of growth. But it really does matter where the growth is happening. I mean, we may have a net decline in growth across the county, student population growth, but there may be an area of the county that's actually growing at 10%. I mean, that may be a big number, but let's say 3%. So, it does matter where it's happening, and we have to accommodate in that area. And I think Jay made the point that you can't get enough dominos to fall to make something like that work. If your capacity is on one side of the county and your growth's happening on the other side, you can't really make that work, absent more capacity in the area where it's happening, right? So I think that's one, and maybe a suggestion on that would be that as we go through this annually, or even more often than annually, on this part of it, to see where the growth is actually happening in the county, not just aggregate numbers, but maybe more, can it be broken down regionally? So we see that the growth, maybe the number has declined by 100 across the board, but it's increased by 400 in the southeast, for example. That might be really useful as we think about this, and give a little more context to it.
Thank you for that. We have that data on our website, but it's not broken down. You would have to do the math, but that's a good suggestion for us to do some of that.
The other point is, I'm really sensitive to the concerns about debt. I mean, Donna brought up that, the debt numbers, I know Commissioner Sturgeon brought it up in her comments. I'm sensitive to that, but I think it's also really important that we realize that a debt number means nothing apart from the other side of the equation, which is the assets and the value that that's up against, right? So, I mean, one point, $2 billion or $1 billion plus of debt seems like a huge number. When you put it against what the value of our county is and how much, you know, assessed value there is, it's not as big a number. So I just think we have to, and again, that's not even our purview, that's the county commission's purview, to make decisions about what to fund, what not to fund, what the consequences of that funding are in terms of property taxes, et cetera. But it is important, I think, when we talk about debt, to put it in context of what's on the other side of that ledger, because that's often not talked about when those debt numbers are thrown around. It's not, and again, I'm not suggesting you're throwing it around lightly. I mean, it is an important issue, and I'm sensitive to it. But I just think we have to put it in context to be fair to those who make these decisions and to the reality of what the finances actually look like and what considerations have to go into that, because a number by itself means nothing unless you put the other numbers into the equation.
Thank you for that. And you actually touched on the original driver for this five-year capital plan to begin with, which was some of the requirements placed on the county for their bond rating. And that's why this document started. We feel like it's important to us for planning purposes, so it gives a lot more value than that original purpose for us, and that's also why we added that extra column, some of those discussions that you all mentioned, to give a little bit more information even beyond that minimum five years.
Thank you so much, Board, for the questions and discussion. We can now move to a vote. Jason, as long as you recommend-
I do recommend approval.
The vote is nine yes, one no.
Thank you. The motion did pass to approve the five-year capital improvement plan. We will now move on to the review of the Code of Ethics, Board policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, the Board is scheduled for a review of your Code of Ethics and the next item on the agenda as well. At the work session, your chair presented that to you all, and you didn't have any recommended changes, so I do recommend this as is.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Mr. Apria, thank you. In a second. Mr. Beasley, thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Board members, we can move to our vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Motion was approved for the code of ethics policy. Next item on the agenda is the review of board norms. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Likewise, you all elected, or one of your iterations of the board elected to establish some norms on how you interact in board meetings. And Madam Chair presented that to you as well. You all made no, made no suggestions for changes, so I do recommend that you reapprove these school board norms for this year.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Apria, thank you. In a second. Thank you, Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Okay, Board, we can move to a vote.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion passed to approve the board norms. Next item on the agenda is the board policies for first reading. The first item is agendas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This policy, recommended policy change came out related to content for the public comments. There's a recommendation from the policy committee that it include a requirement that comments be pertaining to Williamson County schools. So I do recommend approval at first reading. This will come back to policy committee.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr. Cash, thank you. Second, Mr. Welch, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it's a minor thing, but it says Jermaine pertaining. Do we need both words?
The proposal, it started out as Jermaine, but that's, that has a line out. And it may not be noticeable on your copy. Yeah, so it happens to be lined out with the same color. We started with Jermaine, and then the policy committee said, let's be a little bit more, I don't know, use a more common term.
I didn't see this right through. My apologies.
If no further comments, we can cast our votes, Board.
Vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Motion was approved for the first reading of the agendas policy. Next policy for first reading is the work-based learning policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The state has a new, a new, I'm struggling for the term, certification, diploma distinction, thank you, thank you, Dr. Allen, that allows students to actually have a distinction on their grad, on their diploma for work-based learning. To make that happen, we would need to allow students to have that opportunity to do some work-based learning as juniors. We think it's the wise thing to do. The state allows it, so we do recommend this change. And of course, our counseling staff will work with those students for the appropriate students for that progress. Do recommend approval at first reading.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Apria? Thank you. In a second for Mr. Haw. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Board members, let's cast our votes.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Motion passed to approve the first reading of the work-based learning policy. Next item on the agenda is approval of the TESA accountability report. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This TESA accountability report is a new state-required document where districts are required to propose goals that were ultimately related to the third grade retention law. Our student performance actually exceeded the state requirement for goals, but we still have a responsibility under the new law to have this document with some goals. So again, we exceed their requirement, but we included some goals anyway that we think are appropriate to our students, which includes the 2% increase in Algebra I, in the ready graduate, I'm sorry, 2% increase in our ready graduate score, plus a substantial increase in our Algebra I scores based on the work that we've been doing with our internal goals. So do recommend approval of this document, which meets the state requirements.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Ms. Apria? In a second. Mr. Welch, thank you. And we'll open the floor for discussion. Okay. No discussion. Board members, let's cast our votes.
The vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Motion passed to approve the TESA accountability report. And the final item on our agenda is the approval of the 2024-25 calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a really good presentation from Dr. Webb about the results of the calendar committee. And it's, I certainly recommend that you all ask any more questions that you might have. Do recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Apria? In a second. Mr. Brown, thank you. Any discussion on the calendar?
Madam Chair, if I may, before, there's one comment. I was, I was gonna make a comment, but since there's a board member comment, I'll let that.
Okay. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, just to reiterate from the board being, thank you, Dr. Webb and the committee, really great job, and even kind of setting, casting the parameters that you're, that you're using, I think that we've been consistent over the last couple of years. I guess we made some, made some modifications this year, but in talking after the, after the meeting, just a couple of, couple of potential recommendations for, for next year, and maybe even that the staff might have at their, at their discretion this year. But the, one suggestion was to, was to simplify this, this calendar that we put out on, to the public on the website. Like, this has a, this has a lot of days that are really specific from a, and we do it for a compliance reason with the state, that really don't have anything to do with, with students and the, and the public facing, at least the constituencies that are here. If we could publish, publish a really simplified calendar, because it's really not as complicated as it looks, but we combine all the, all the PD days and all the, I was like, I mean, we could really make this, get this down to something really simple to, to share. And then the second would be, and I suppose I've gotten this feedback before, but, but so many, so many industries, healthcare included, are, they're always, they're looking out a year for, to plan for, for their time off. And, and so they try to do it around the breaks when they, when they can. So if it's possible to, to go to a two-year planning cycle where we're, where we get ahead a year, I was like, and then we're already, then we're, it's the same, little bit, little bit of extra work that first year, but the second year, we could kind of, kind of roll it forward, would be, would be great from, from a family perspective. You might, you might not have to nail down all the teacher PD days, but if you could nail the start and end and the, and the breaks, then you could go ahead and publish those for the next year. That would be, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you for that. I was actually gonna mention your item one, but just right before you hit your button, Dr. Webb let me know that you, and I think Mr. Brown, had actually, independent of each other, made that suggestion. We already had that prepared. Dr. Webb's staff put that together today. So we do intend, if you all approve this calendar, to publish that on our website as well, that, the way we described it was a more family-friendly calendar that's got some clarity with the dates that are directly relevant to them. Second, we've had some discussions about two-year calendars. We, we know that the state law does allow that. One item that's been difficult for us to be able to do that is the ACT schedules. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Webb? If you would speak to that briefly.
Absolutely. Thanks for the questions. Yes, we do have the student and staff calendar ready to publish once approved tonight. The testing schedule is a unique variable that has to come into play. I think the calendar committee could certainly work to meet some broad-spectrum parameters if that's the request of the calendar committee next year, to plan maybe not necessarily every single date for the calendar, that would be two years in advance. But certainly putting some parameters in place, knowing that some additional nuances could change, such as late start days, early releases, testing dates, some of those more instructional elements of the calendar could be added at a later time. The large pieces, I think the calendar committee could put some things together that may meet what you're describing. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you. Ms. Clements?
Madam Chair, I just, I love the idea of working a year ahead, so I'm glad that y'all are gonna be implementing that. And I, I just wanted to compliment you guys. You got a great job on the calendar, and I love that you, it was kind of parent-driven that you put out all the surveys and got all the feedback. And I love that, I think families will really appreciate starting on a Monday instead of that half-day Friday, so I'm glad y'all are doing that. Thank you for, for that.
Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't mention it, of course, we talked about it at the work session. That is one of the most significant changes from last year.
Super. Okay. Thank you, Board. We can move forward with our votes.
Recommend approval.
Vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. With that motion, we approved the 2024-25 calendar. That was our final item, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.